Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark. Ms. Herbstrick.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. McCurnan.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Veatch.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Willingham. And Mayor Smith.
Here. I will now entertain a motion to convene into executive session in order to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by our attorney. As authorized by section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia, the subject matter of the meeting is the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. City Council will meet with the city attorney for consultation regarding legal advice pertaining to specific questions and issues arising under the Freedom of Information Act.
So moved. Wiley?
Second, Hill.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark. Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McCurnan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Veatch.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham. And Mayor Smith.
We are now in executive session.
I'd like to motion to certify that only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, were discussed during the closed meeting, and that only those public business meetings, business matters identified in the motion which convened the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting. I will entertain a motion to reconvene into open session.
The motion is moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Willingham, and a second from Councilor Herbstrit. Carrie, would you please call the row?
I got that. Please.
Mr. Clark. Ms. Herbstrit.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beech.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
And, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now in open session. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
The motion is moved. Wiley, second.
Third.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrit?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beech?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and we will begin the City Council regular meeting at 6:00. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the October 27, 2020, regular meeting of the common council. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Herbstrit?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. McKeonan?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Beech?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Willingham?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
We will now observe a moment of silence and be led into pledge allegiance by Vice Mayor Hill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have before us the minutes of the October 13, 2020, regular and work session meetings. Unless there are edits, changes, or deletions, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
The motion is moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Hill, and a second from Councilor Herbstrit. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
The next item we have on the agenda is a report of the mayor. I have two items here. One is to let everyone know that October 31, this Saturday, is the deadline for the mayor's excellent award. So if you know of a person, a group, or an organization that you would like to nominate for this award, please submit it by Saturday. Also, in our area and throughout the nation, we have an increase of COVID-19 cases, and that we ask that everyone, please, continue to wear their masks and social distance and be safe. Thank you. That is my report. The next report is a report of the city manager, Mr. Hoffman.
Mayor and council, a few things. First off, as you all know, this coming Tuesday, next Tuesday, is election day. This is a polling station, so we want everyone to be aware that there could be additional traffic around this site, so plan accordingly. I will also be out for the next three days, so the city is in the capable hands of Mary Blow. If you need anything, please contact her. The city's annual leaf collection program begins on November 2 in Area 2. Updates are posted daily, and residents can find their collection area on the Public Works Leaf Collection webpage. We are currently accepting applications for round three of the CARES Act grant program for small businesses and 501(c)(3) organizations. There are new requirements that were introduced for this round, and previous recipients can reapply with new COVID-19-related expenses. That deadline is November 13 at 5:00 p.m. We are now accepting applications for the CARES Act utility bill assistance. We have approximately 1,200 city residents that are past due on their utility bills, and those who have experienced income loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic may be eligible for assistance. United Way of Northern Shenandoah Valley is managing the program. Help with rent and mortgage payments is also available. We encourage people to visit the United Way of Northern Shenandoah Valley's website for more information and to apply. I want to thank Facilities for doing a very nice job installing Plexiglas shields in the council chambers. Those of you who might have stopped by City Hall or watched the Planning Commission might have noticed that. We successfully held a Planning Commission meeting in council chambers, and we're incorporating their feedback now with the intent that this meeting, that our regular council meetings, might eventually return there. That's really, I'm going to defer to the comfort of the mayor and council as to when that would be appropriate, especially given the fact that we are seeing an increase in our COVID numbers. We do feel like we can safely socially distance and provide for public participation in the room, but, as I'm about to go into, we are seeing an increase of numbers, and we don't want to send the wrong message. So, in that vein, we are closely monitoring our COVID numbers. We have seen increases, especially since the beginning of the month. We are monitoring three primary benchmarks, and we have a meeting with the Public Health District later this week to establish what triggers might result in some operational changes to implement more administrative controls. And that could involve some changes in city operations at City Hall and some of our other facilities. We're not making any moves at the moment, but we are monitoring it several times a week and checking in to determine whether or not we will have to take some additional precautions. So we do encourage everyone just to remember, we're not out of this yet, and wear your masks, socially distance, and hopefully we'll get through this sooner rather than later. Now, unfortunately, as you're aware, this has led to modifications or cancellations of some events. We're working with First Night on some significant alterations to their New Year's event. It is not canceled, just to be clear. First Night is not canceled, and they are, we do, they are working on, and the city staff are working closely with them on what we feel will be still a very fun and enjoyable event, and we hope everybody participates. More to come on that as it is planned. Pancake Day on Saturday, November 7, here at the Active Living Center in Jim Barnett Park, is a new format. It's a drive-through format rather than an in-dining experience, so you can still get your tickets through the Kiwanis Club for that one. And then, of course, as many of you might have heard, the holiday parade has been canceled, but we're very pleased to announce that it is being replaced this year with a new tradition, a Lights in the Park display here through Jim Barnett Park. Details are on our website. It'll run from November 23 through December 20, 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., seven days a week. We are trying to schedule Santa. He's very busy this time of year, but we are working to arrange to have Santa available when people drive through. If there's severe inclement weather, it might be canceled, but it will be currently seven days a week, every evening, and we hope it'll be something that we do every year, even when the parade comes back. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Next is the report of the city attorney.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Melissa. The next item on our agenda is public hearings. Our first hearing is a second reading in ordinance to authorize the additional appropriation of funds for necessary expenditures of the city of Winchester, Virginia, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Just one update. I did, in your packet, update the CARES funding sheet. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. And we did update the budget ordinance for the $75,000 Council Willingham asked for last time.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. If not, Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
No, sir.
Nope. I will now enclose the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve. Wiley?
Second.
Herbstrit?
I have a motion from Council Wiley, and a second from Councilor Herbstrit. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrit?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beech?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Celeste. You have a good evening.
Thank you.
The next item is also a second reading. RZ-20-272 in ordinance to rezone 1.96 acres of land at 1811 Roberts Street from highway commercial B2 district to highway commercial district with planned unit development overlay and rezone 0.4 portion of land at 1802 Roberts Street from limited industrial district to highway commercial district with planned unit development overlay. Mr. Humes, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, and members of council. There's no changes to this item from first reading or from the work session. There's no changes to this item from first reading or from the work session where you forwarded it, recommending approval. Thanks.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? If so, you have three minutes. Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online on this issue?
Yes, sir. We have one public comment from Margaret Trevor of 1807 Roberts Street. She comments, "I am concerned about how close the apartment complex will be to my house. There will be additional noise, lights, traffic, crime, and the lot is too small for three apartment complexes. Will there be a fence and trees?" Question mark? Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body? Counselor Willingham.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hoffman, I know that Counselor McCurnan and I had raised a number of questions in regards to this project, given its location in the fourth ward. I know that Mr. Osnoc and his team had provided answers about the traffic counts on Roberts and Bellevue, and also looking at potential ways to improve safety there. Do you know, one of the other items we'd asked for was increased signage and the trimming of trees. Do you know if that's been scheduled or where that is in the status, or when this will be done?
I don't know off the top of my head if it's been scheduled or not.
Okay. The only other thing that I would ask is that, you know, we did ask for some additional signage in that neighborhood. Whether this project goes forward or not, going around Bellevue can be quite dangerous for kids who are playing out in the street. There aren't a lot of sidewalks and things of that nature. I know it's on the plan, but the other thing that I would request is if we could have increased police patrols to help potentially, you know, slow down that traffic. I know we've done other ways of calming traffic in that area and other areas of the city. I think a project on its own has a lot of merits. I understand why they would want to do this. That's a difficult site, I think, from our commercial development perspective. I will support this tonight, but I do think that there are a number of things that we need to do as a city to make this a safe location for our citizens, whether or not this project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCurnan?
I agree with the concerns raised by Counselor Willingham. If we do look at the traffic counts, the ones at Bellevue and Roberts, which is one of the openings into the development, is at 1,100 vehicles a day, far less than at other ends of Bellevue or of Roberts, and so that is a significantly busy corner. I'm concerned, very much so for the citizen, we've heard in a public comment, that there does not seem to be a wide berth between the parking lot and that house that sits there. It's a single dwelling home, the only home on Roberts there, and it will abut very closely to the parking lot and to the apartments. Again, I'm not convinced that traffic is going to go out on Juber early and go right. It is a right-only exit. If they need to get to 81, if they need to get to Pleasant Valley, all of the commerce on that side of town, I believe they're going to continue to use Roberts so they can turn right on Bellevue and proceed from there. So I'm not in favor at this point of this development.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the body?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Counsel Beach.
Second.
And a second from Counsel Clark. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
No.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McCarrenan.
No.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
No.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. And that moves forward. The next item we have on the agenda is also a second reading. TA-20-365 in ordinance amending Article 18-6-2 of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to definitions of the off-street parking regulations. Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening. So this is the bollard amendment that would allow bollards to be installed in lieu of curbs on commercial projects. I'm available for questions, and Mr. Mislowsky, the applicant who sponsored this amendment, is here as well.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? If not, Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
No, sir.
I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve. Wiley?
Second.
I have a motion from Counsel Wiley and a second from Willingham. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McCarrenan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. And that moves forward. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you.
Now is the time on our agenda for public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to address council? If so, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. Do you have a sheet? There being none, Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online for this meeting?
Yes, sir. I have one comment to read. From Tracy Fitzsimmons, Ph.D., address 1460 University Drive. Dear Mayor Smith, after talking with several local citizens and seeing a related article in the Winchester Star, I am reaching out to you to clarify some misconceptions with regard to the proposed development project at 222 Spring Street. One, the university has grown in recent years, and we hope to continue such slow managed growth in the years to come. We do not currently have enough housing available on our campus to house more than 60% of our undergraduates, so many juniors and seniors live off-campus, as do most graduate students. The developers of the Spring Street property did call the university leadership while conducting their due diligence in order to ask about the housing needs of our university community. That has been the extent of our interaction. Two, I would like to be clear that this project is not a Shenandoah University project, nor is it a project that SU has requested, sponsored, endorsed, or invested in. Three, there is no partnership nor agreement, official or unofficial, between the university and the project's investors, architects, or contractors regarding this project. Four, the university is not party to any agreement to direct or encourage students or employees to live in this development, nor is the university slated to receive donations or payments from the developers. Thank you for taking the time to read this email. I wish you and the council all the best. Tracy Fitzsimmons, Ph.D., President, Shenandoah University, 1460 University Drive, Winchester,
I believe there was another correspondence. Mr. Milstead?
Okay. I do have a comment from Mr. Milstead. It was not directed to be read, but I will read it if that is the will of the body. David, I have never approached you on a policy issue before. I'm sorry, let me back up. This is from Phil Milstead, received via email. No address provided. David, I have never approached you on a policy issue before, but now I see something so disastrous that I have to speak up. I never thought such a bad proposal would make it so far. The proposed at-home development for behind the Roy Rogers on Pleasant Valley will be nothing but an albatross around Winchester's financial neck. To believe the developer who will live there is absurd. If he states, if as he states, it will be mostly SU students, expect the school to buy it a few years later, and that would eliminate all tax income from the property, but not all city expenses to support it. I see the developer has changed the configuration to include four-bedroom apartments, a real party scene for college students. Despite what the developer says, those will be rented mostly to families. Expect to see at least 100 school-aged children living in the complex within two years of completion. There is a better way, in all caps. Restrict the development to the currently planned two-bedroom and smaller apartments. Permit the developer to use floor space intended for larger apartments to be used for studio and one-bedroom apartments. Those are actually more appealing to serious college students and will drastically cut down on K through 12 living there. Demand that at least 20% of each size unit be set aside for low-income housing, and that city-employed teachers and emergency responders have first choice at any low-income unit vacancy. This not only helps furnish badly needed low-income housing, it also is a boost to our teachers and emergency responders. There is at least one county in Virginia that made the developer do this with his entire complex. It was challenged, and the county easily won. Having emergency responders like police on sight keeps down crime. Demand that the developer have in his deed a provision that, in case of sale, the city has up to five months to buy the property under the same conditions. City ownership would dramatically increase income to the city and provide the opportunity to provide more low-income housing. It also provides a cheaper alternative to the homeless problem that the alternative's now used. If you don't know how the city can finance such a purchase, just let me know, and I will lay out an easy plan that works. I do hope you can help guide this, something more productive for Winchester. If you have questions or want to discuss this, let me know. Phil Milstead.
Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. There are no items on the consent agenda, so the first item on the agenda is a first reading in ordinance to amend and readopt Section 27-8 of the Winchester City Code regarding refunds of erroneously paid taxes, presented by Mary Blow. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. There's no change or comments from staff or citizens on this one. We still remain the same. We recommend approval of raising that from $2,500 to $5,000.
Good. Do you have any questions for Mary? Mary, thank you.
Thank you all.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Wiley?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. McKeonan?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Beach? Mr. Wiley? Mr. Willingham?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
The first item on our agenda is a request of Brett Michael Wolfington for a conditional use permit to allow a short-term rental use per Section 4-2-12 of the Winchester zoning ordinance at 310 Amherst Street, Zone Medium Density Residential in Winchester Historic District, presented by Mr. Hopkins. Welcome back.
So this again is a short-term rental at 310 Amherst Street. Here is the overhead. You can see it's a fairly small lot but large house. It's on the corner of Morgan Street. It's slightly west of downtown. It is Zoned MR Medium Density Residential, has historic overlay. Here you can see the house is a, again, is a fairly large house, but there's very little off-street parking. There's only three spaces. The key facts for you to consider, again, the small lot and large size of the house, has five bedrooms split between an apartment unit and a house. There are four in the house portion and one in the apartment. It was originally advertised for up to 14 guests. We did receive complaints when it was at that level, mainly for parking issues. It does have three off-street parking spaces. The owner bought this house and then received a job offer in West Virginia that they couldn't refuse, but the intent is to come back and inhabitate this three to five years down the road per their application. So my recommendation is to approve with the conditions that are listed in the staff report, but the main one really being that there be a maximum of eight guests. I think that would help constrain any sort of spillover from undesirable sound or other nuisance factors and also help keep the parking down for what we know to be a complaint from or an issue from complaints. The applicant is here tonight also as well if you have questions for her.
Thank you, councillors. Council Willingham.
Thanks. Frank, you said you do recommend approval of this?
I do.
Okay. So your recommendation is to limit it to eight guests, but there's only, there are three dedicated off-street parking spots? Is that what you said?
Correct.
So if there are eight guests, there could hypothetically though still be an over-parking situation there. How would? I'm trying to figure out from the neighborhood's perspective, obviously, I drive that street every day. I do see tons of cars out in the parking. If I lived there, you know, what would I tell a citizen about, there's, you know, eight people potentially staying here at any time taking up these spots? I'm just trying to figure out from the city's perspective what communication we would have if people started complaining about the number of parking or lack of parking.
Sure. There is the garage is not too far from there. It's maybe 500 yards away that could be utilized for this property, I believe. On top of that, I think the size of the house and the number of people at eight could incorporate a family, and so my hope is that by having it at eight, the maximum worst you could probably get was eight individual drivers, but on the average, hopefully it's split down to hopefully, you know, three or four cars if a family or two showed up.
Gotcha.
Can you highlight the house, please? Council Beach?
Thank you, Mayor. Frank, I appreciate your presentation on this. I believe it's been rented, from my reading, it's been rented before. Have we had any complaints or any issues with parking or besides the noise?
Just the one I received over the summer in relation to this property that I'm aware of.
And that was mainly due to having 14 persons in there when?
When it was advertised at that amount, I don't know what it was rented to at that time when those complaints were generated, but my guess is to a significant number of individuals.
And with the proposal, we're capping it off at eight?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Council Willingham.
Frank, just going back to this parking issue, I mean, eight still seems like a lot. Even if it was just a rental property, even if they were a family, you know, there probably would not, there could likely be eight cars parking here at any time. That may be a maximum, maybe that's a stretch, but it's not unrealistic to think that there could be five to six. It could be a condition, could it not, that we require that they maintain some parking spaces at the parking garage to alleviate off-street parking? Or maybe that's a Melissa question?
I would defer.
As part of the conditions of this, can we require that they maintain a certain amount of parking at the parking garage?
The, since this is a conditional use permit, the council can impose whatever reasonable conditions that are subject to approval.
Thank you. The only way that I will support this, I don't have any issues with what they're trying to do, but I do have a problem with taking up parking spots for the rest of the neighborhood for this type of use. So the only way that I would support this is with a minimum of two to three parking spaces at the garage. Thank you. I'm happy to make a motion with that extra condition and if no one else has any comments.
Council Sullivan?
So thank you, Council Willingham, for that information. You know, kind of reading the letter that was provided by the applicant and sort of their situation and how they got here and things of that nature, I can't honestly remember what we've done in the past for these types of properties that are not owner-occupied.
Right.
These tend to break out into kind of two categories, which is the owner-occupied, obviously, person owns it is living there, and then the not-owner-occupied, which is its own separate category. We, we're kind of still filling our way through this as a community and a body, so one of the conditions I would like to see before I could approve it would be maybe a review after 12 to 18 months, that it comes back and we get some input and some feedback.
Okay.
That would be one thing I'd like to see, because honestly, I mean, we just don't have a lot to go on in terms of, we know that this is what works, we know that this doesn't work, or things like that. So some type of review I would like to see as part of the conditions.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Council Beach? Are you raising your hand for Council Hill?
Council Hill, go first. Thank you. Frank, I don't know if I missed this, but is there any parking spots there on the property itself?
There are three.
There are three on the property?
And if you can see in this overhead, they'd all kind of have to park in behind each other.
Okay. And so with three on the property and you're suggesting use of the auto park and then the rest being on the street itself?
Correct.
Okay. And I miss this, but Council Willingham, did you suggest that you include that as a condition that we do have the auto park?
That would be a condition that I, for my approval, that I'm going to request. I'm going to, I will make a motion later on to include that if no one else has any other comments.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank, I'm trying to work with Council Willingham's proposal. Is something maybe alternative to that is we limit the number of cars that are assigned to this property when guests come, like four?
That's also something that could be done, I think, based on what Melissa's feedback was there, you could, you know, impose any reasonable condition.
My concern is if we ask them to get long-term parking at the garage, the guests won't use them anyhow. They'll just park there on the street, and then we still have the same issue.
Yes, so if you wanted to impose a maximum number of cars and a maximum number of residents, that certainly could be a condition.
Before I call on you, Mrs. Wolfington is here if anyone has any questions for her sitting in the audience. Council McKeonan?
I would be in favor of this if we could consider a limit on the cars. I think that's a good idea, we could get that to four.
So Council Willingham?
I'm still going to-
One second. Council Herbstrick?
Yeah, I just have a question in regards to, it has rented for 30 consecutive days or less, that's part of this. So, so what, somebody rents it for 30 days and they, then they don't for a day, and then they can go back and rent for another 30 days? I mean, how does that work?
So generally, the 30-day breakdown is for transient versus non-transient lodging, I guess, or so you can rent an apartment. That's the number of days that that breaks down for. And so short-term rental of any kind is to allow for a sub-30 days rental, and generally is considered, you know, Airbnbs or delay term.
Okay. Okay.
Council Willingham?
I'm going to make the motion to include the parking spots. I don't believe that limiting the cars will have the desired effect, because I think it's going to be impossible to do. Whether people use the garage spots or not should be up to the owner, and I think that will be indicated as part of the review. So I am going to make a motion that we forward this with approval with the existing conditions and add two additional conditions. One is that they, that the owner secure two parking spots at the closest parking garage for use of their short-term residence, and number two, that the council review this after 12 months.
I have a motion.
Second.
The second from Council Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That carries. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. The next item is T8-20-532, an ordinance amending Article 18-8-18C of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to the sign regulations of the Medical Center District. This provision will allow for freestanding signs in the district to be placed closer together. Mr. Hopkins?
Yes, this is a privately-sponsored text amendment for the hospital property. That and a couple of surrounding contiguous lots are the only ones that are Zoned MC District, and inside of that district, they have wayfinding signage that directs you where to go, and it's only for internal roads on it, so it's really not out towards the road. And there is a current provision that says that they can't be placed within 100 foot of one another, and so this provision is literally just striking that so that they can place wayfinding signs closer together than 100 feet. And their main interest is in this intersection here, and if I try and blow it up for you, you can see in red, these are signs that they would like to put in, and so this one is within 88 feet of this black one here, and up here, they have one within 75 feet of the one across the intersection. And so they just want to strike that provision and provide wayfinding as they've received feedback and indicating that people are getting lost on that internal road. So that is what this text amendment is for. Here's an example of the type of signage it is for. It's only on the internal roads of that district, and that district really just contains the hospital.
Right. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
I'll make a motion to forward this with approval.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Willingham and a second from Council Beach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you.
The next item is a request of Pizza Co. LLC to amend previously approved conditions associated with conditional use permit for a neighborhood convenience establishment at 501 North Loudoun Street, Zone Limited High Density Residential District with Historic Winchester District Overlay. Mr. Hume, it's good evening.
Evening, Mayor Smith, members of council. This is a request that came before council about three years ago. Some of you may recall, the northwest corner of North Avenue and North Loudoun Street, Mr. Jesse Van Fang pursued a request for neighborhood convenience establishment in the form of a pizza restaurant. He has successfully operated that, to our knowledge, without any substantial complaints, and so one of the conditions that you had was that he needed to come back in three years for reapproval. On the screen there, you can see the outdoor dining area there with the umbrellas. Part of the reapproval is that he would also like council to consider amending some of the conditions that are associated with it. There were 13 or so conditions associated with the approval originally. Some of those are no longer applicable because they are actions that have already occurred, such as securing a variance to be able to reuse the building. The main focus of this request in terms of revised application is that he physically wants to expand the outdoor dining area to include all of the area between the building and North Avenue, as shown on the screen here. There would be some fencing proposed. This is the direction away from the closest home, so do not anticipate that there would be any great impact with that. Specifically, he would like to change condition number four, which was restricted to what was depicted on the original site plan. That would now be per the revised exhibit that I've just looked at. And then the hours of operation was restricted to 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights. There were some provisions in there about following the Winchester Public School calendar. The request now would be to be able to go to 10 o'clock on every night, but still make reference to the calendar, and this is for the outdoor seating area, specifically where there might be a potential impact arising from the conditional use permit. The other two impacted conditions, number eight, obtaining administrative relief from the BZA, that would be removed since it's an action that has been secured, and then number 12 is the one that requires the reapproval by city council after three years. He would like to have that removed. The planning commission held a public hearing on this. I don't believe there were any public speakers. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of it, and glad to answer any questions council has.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hume? Council Willingham?
Thanks. Tim, it sounds like for all specific matters, they've done a good job of being a good operator, a good neighbor. Is that a general statement that you'd be comfortable agreeing with?
Yes.
Okay. And I did speak to Krista Ferris. She said she's not had any problems, anything that has come up. She's the adjoining neighbor. Anything that's ever come up, they've addressed, and so I think one of the concerns originally with this proposal was that, you know, our kids are in school, and I think they've continued in this change of items or conditions to continue to be sensitive to the Winchester Public School calendar. So I think they've shown that they've been a good operator, they've been willing to do all the things that are correct for this, so I think we should support them in their efforts to continue to run their business both efficiently and also in coordination with the neighborhood. So I think this is a great example of being able to do a neighborhood establishment, and I'm definitely going to support this tonight. Thanks.
Council Herbstrick?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if there was any comments from any of the neighbors. I knew that this was quite an issue back in the day, and just curious if anyone responded to this. And it sounds like from what Council Willingham said, that it's been positive working with the owners, and they've been responsive, so. But there's no other comments that came in regarding this?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Council Beach?
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, just to make sure I understand it right, right now, the hours were restricted Sunday through Saturday to nine, and then, or Sunday through Thursday till nine, and then the other two days till 10, and that's the hours of operation, correct?
Again, that's applicable to the outdoor dining area.
And, but they want to go straight across the board till 10. The noise ordinance is after that anyhow, right?
The, in the residential districts, the quiet time begins at 10:00 PM, so it does coincide, yes.
But then the outside is still staying at 8:00 as it was before?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a good proposal, and I guess the countors before me said it's a good business. I'm supportive of it.
Council Hill?
Thank you. I too think I will support this change that they're requesting, applicant is requesting. I've heard a lot of positive reports from citizens that do live in that area, and occasionally I do frequent that establishment, and I've enjoyed their pizza very much, so. But besides that, I think given the report that we've received from citizens as well as what I've heard from other councillors, I can be very supportive of this.
Mr. Hume, I have a question. So the owners did not request for the outdoor seating to exceed 8:00, and the reason that I'm asking is that people are going out more, but they want to sit outside, and that's some establishment, food establishments, they have bought outdoor heaters. So have they requested to have their hours extended to 10:00 for outdoors?
So the revised language for condition number six reads, hours of operation to be no later than 10:00 PM, except that the hours for the outside seating area be no later than 8:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday to follow the Winchester Public School calendar.
Seeing the conditions that we're under, since we are under a pandemic, and they have been good stewards in their community for the last three years, I think that I would suggest maybe increasing the hours outdoors to maybe 9:00 or 9:30, just to assist them with business. That would be a suggestion of mine. Council Clark?
I would just concur with that recommendation. I'd like to see the outdoor dining go till 9:00.
And we can consult with the applicant. I don't know if they wish to do that. I don't know if he's here or not. I don't see-
Can we at least give them that option?
Certainly.
And so if they, they want to stay at eight, then they can, but they would have the option of going to nine. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend forwarding this, but to change number six to include the seating no later than 9:00 on Sunday through Thursday, so if they want to take advantage of that, they can. If they don't want to, that's up to them.
Second.
So that's a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Council Beach. Was there a comment, Council McKenna?
Got you, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The next item is RZ-20-562, an ordinance to rezone 0.81 acre portion of land at 402 North Cameron Street from commercial industrial district to central business district. Mr. Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Most of you are probably familiar with the property. This is the- This is the old freight house situated north of the Laurel Center there, along the east side of North Cameron Street. And specifically, they wish to rezone a portion of the property that was acquired from CSX, situated on a separate parcel up until recently, north of the Laurel Center. Now that it is all one parcel, they would like to have consistent zoning, which includes the existing B1 Central Business District property where the Laurel Center itself is, as well as rezoning this northern parcel, very narrow extension between the CSX Railroad and North Cameron Street, from the Commercial Industrial designation to the B1, so that it's all the same. So, where the building is, is already B1. The blue that you see there, to the north of 402, which is the portion of the site known as 430, where the old freight house is, that is Commercial Industrial zoning today, and they would like to change that to B1. And if we zoom out, you can see that, over time, there's been a northerly extension of the B1 District, up along North Cameron Street. Properties in the block or block and a half to the south previously were CM1, so this is consistent with the progression and with the comprehensive plan. The only thing we will note is that this is unconditional. There are no proffers associated with this. And when you rezone property from a Commercial Industrial designation, such as CM1, that allows zero residential units per acre, to B1, which allows anywhere from 43 units per acre up to over 100 units per acre, there is that potential impact, but the Laurel Center has no interest in doing that. And particularly, when you look at how narrow the parcel is, and the fact that they already have the plans in place to do enhancements to the freight house, we don't feel that that's a likely impact that will ever arise. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Are there any questions for Mr. Hume? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to forward.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Clark and a second from Council Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Hume's. The next item is RZ-20-379, in ordinance to rezone 6.23 acres of land at 222 Spring Street, from Highway Commercial to Highway Commercial District with planned unit development overlay district, subject to proffers. Mr. Hume?
Thank you again. I have a number of slides, but I'm going to try to keep the presentation brief, and then if any councillors have questions about some of the other slides, I'd be glad to go to those. Some of you are familiar with this request, having read about it following the planning commission's review. The commission did table this a number of months, and finally, at their October 13th meeting, I believe, excuse me, October 20th meeting last Tuesday, they did forward it to planning commission, to city council from planning commission unanimously recommending approval. There has been a lot of scrutiny of this project. It is a proposal for mixed use. There's two commercial buildings that are proposed out front, and then, a large multifamily structure, multiple levels, that would have a internal parking garage at the rear of the property. The proposal is for a variety of one, two, three, and four bedroom units. Believe there's only eight of the four bedroom units and eight of the one bedroom units. The majority of them are two bedroom, with some three bedroom units. I can go into that detail if the council desires. The view that's up here now is from over the top of the CSX Railroad, in behind Planet Fitness, looking toward the northeast. The Greystone cul-de-sac is in the upper corner, and you can see the proximity of some of the single-family homes there. You can also see the Evergreen buffer, that's kind of toward the center of the screen, wrapping around the cul-de-sac and providing some buffering. That is consistent with some of the proffers that date back to the 2011 rezoning, when city council changed the zoning from medium-density residential to highway commercial. And it's important to note that this is a rezoning to establish PUD, Planned Unit Development, on top of land that already is zoned commercial. So, the impacts that might arise from commercial zoning and traffic associated with commercial development is what you are comparing this request to. In this case, it's taking a lot of the acreage, over four of the 6.23 acres, and converting it back effectively to residential, albeit in the form of a multifamily structure with, again, structured parking. So, the change on the left, the existing zoning, has some proffers associated with the northern portion of the site, as depicted on the exhibit there. Spring Street is the street that cuts through the site there, and then, the proposal simply adds the PUD overlay to the entire 6.23 acres that is situated between the CSX Railroad at the rear of the site and Spring Street up at the front. The development plan has been refined over the past four months. Specifically, there is a large, somewhat U-shaped building. The parking garage is embedded into the back, adjacent to the CSX Railroad. There is access at two points along Spring Street, and then, in the foreground, there are two commercial buildings for which the tenant mix is not yet known.
Tim, can you make that bigger, please?
I'm trying. Doesn't seem to want to zoom in for me, but I do have another exhibit that better shows the configuration of the building here. Second.
Thank you.
The applicant changed this from a conventional unproffered rezoning to a proffered rezoning back last month. Don't want to spend a lot of time in the details, but the first proffer is the one where they now specifically called out a six-foot-tall opaque fence that would be situated along the northern boundary. And so, the red line that you see in this zoom in on the development plan shows that area where there would be the six-foot fence, in addition to the existing mix of evergreen and deciduous trees over closer to the Greystone Terrace cul-de-sac, along with some new evergreens that would be proposed, extending back toward the railroad there. There's a, the black structure there is a maintenance building, but otherwise, you can kind of see where the properties are on Long Greystone Terrace there. So, the first property that's actually north of the red line is the former Spring Street right-of-way, which does not have a house on it. In fact, that is property that's still owned by the city of Winchester. Going back to the proffers, the second and third proffer pertain to architectural design of the two commercial buildings. Since they don't know what the elevations will be, they instead are basically saying it'll be consistent with the architecture of the commercial structures on the east side of Spring Street. That's where Pet Value, Pizano's Pizza, and Tropical Smoothie situated. So, if you can picture that, that building, that is what they would proffer the character of the commercial buildings to be. There's been a lot of attention. The residents, particularly along Greystone Terrace, have expressed concerns about parking impacts. The project had considerably less off-street parking provided initially. They are now up to a total of 395 spaces proposed, as indicated down at the bottom. A little further up than that, the total onsite parking required is 286. So, 395 spaces provided, including many, that is, 281 of those 395 spaces would be in the structured parking garage, and another 114 being provided in some of the surface parking lots adjacent. So, 286 required, 395 provided. The other concern that's been expressed is with regard to the density. Recall that council recently significantly increased the maximum density permitted under the PUD section. It had previously been a maximum of 18 units per acre. The starting point was amended to be 16 units per acre, but allow for a doubling of that based on performance criteria, such as green building, proximity to the University or the Medical Center, proximity to a transit stop, whether or not there are elevators provided, and whether or not a percentage of the units are provided as affordable dwelling units. Here, you can see the various performance standards that the applicant is making use of. Again, capped at double the base density. The theoretical maximum is 32 units per acre, and so, that translates to a maximum density of 197 units on the site. They are requesting 192 units on the site. As I mentioned earlier, this is a better graphic showing the colored configuration of the building here represents the one, two, three, and four bedroom units. On the next slide, we have the unit mix. So, eight of the units, or 4% of the units, are one-bedroom units. 140 of the units, or 70.7%, are two-bedroom. 42 units are three-bedroom, and eight units are four-bedroom units. So, not a lot of the smaller or larger units in terms of bedroom count. This is about a quarter of a million square foot project, so a fairly significant economic impact to the city. They are providing interior recreational space, as well as a pool and some other exterior recreational amenities. Again, the parking, actually, this is indicating 398, so 395 to 398 spaces proposed. And then, just very briefly, we do have elevations of the building, including the rear elevation at the top, which is where you can see the parking garage embedded into the back. Have information pertaining to the fiscal impacts, if any councillor has questions about that. And then, last one that I want to focus on is this connection to the university. You did receive the correspondence earlier from President Fitzsimmons about the university not being a partner in this, and we understand that to be the case. But we do anticipate that a very, very high percentage of the population here, at least 80%, would likely be Shenandoah University students. And so, compared to the all-commercial development that might otherwise occur here, and would be allowed by right under B2 zoning, we feel that the mixed use represents a better planning and more consistent with the comprehensive plan, in that it distributes trips that would otherwise be all-commercial. And we do anticipate that a significant number of walking and biking trips will occur. So, they did, that is, the applicant hired Gorov Slade. Some of you may recall that was the consulting firm that the city hired when we worked with Shenandoah University on the Millwood Avenue realignment. And they have mapped out a number of routes that the students would take, and identified some improvements that they feel would be beneficial. At that point, I'm going to stop and ask if there's any questions.
Councils, Council McKenna?
I am concerned, further down the road, that this could be a property that SU would choose to purchase, thereby losing the tax credits that this is going to reap for us. Are we able to put any kind of condition into this, in terms of selling the property to them, or... I'm asking for support or answers. It's just a concern. I don't know what the answer is.
So, rezonings can be, can include voluntary proffers from the applicant, but planning commission and council cannot apply conditions to a rezoning request?
Okay, thank you.
You can identify potential impacts that have not been adequately mitigated, in your opinion?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Herb Street?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tim, for the presentation. I spent a lot of time looking at this and have several points that I think are areas of concern for me. First of all, I mean, it was helpful to get the information from Tracy regarding the need for student housing. I guess, in the midst of this document, it really, to me, it really, the whole project seems to be built around SU students, but I didn't get, I didn't get the numbers, the data, the need. That just did not come through at all to me. And so, I feel like that, that it's built around something that I'm not confident is going to be, is going to be true. When we look at the need for housing in our community, clearly, the location of it, being close to SU, the need for housing in our community, I mean, I could certainly see, you know, is it 80%? Is it 50%? I don't know. I feel like that that's, that's an area of concern for me. The other thing that I noticed that was in the document is that the total acreage is 6.2, but at some point, it seems like soon after it's developed, that its 4.6 acres, the actual housing part, is going to be sold to Bluestone Land LLC, which is going to leave the 1.63 acres of commercial development. So, you know, I guess, looking at the PUD and the bonuses, I thought I had seen in here that one of those bonuses was for commercial. And I guess, my concern is, if we're using the commercial as one of the bonuses, and it's really not going to be 6.2 acres, it's going to be 4.6, can we still use that? Because I do think that there are, I think 192 units is, is too much for this location. I think that, you know, the size of the four bedrooms, I think, were 1,400 and some square feet. I know that it was mentioned about COVID. I think that having four college students potentially in a 1,400-square-foot space, I don't know, that to me seems like it's still not sufficient. But the other, the other point that I want to make is regarding the traffic. I mean, what I saw in there was a traffic statement, is exactly what it said, traffic statement, not a traffic study. Maybe I'm understanding that incorrectly, but I didn't see information about the estimated trip distribution, intersections, peak traffic time. It seemed like, when I looked at the traffic document that was provided, there was one and three-quarter pages on traffic, and then, eight pages on pedestrians. So, again, I think there's way, way more emphasis being put on students and pedestrians, which I'm happy to see that, but I'm also concerned, that's a, this is a section of Pleasant Valley and Millwood. That whole section there gets so congested, and we struggle with, with traffic and intersections and the safety and, you know, having potentially hundreds of pedestrians and a lot more cars on the road there. I just felt like that traffic statement, it needs to be much more comprehensive. I didn't see details in regards to affordable housing. I think that, you know, what is that going to look like? Is that, is there going to be affordable housing there?
Council Herb Street? Can we give a couple of...
I just got one, I got one more thing.
Okay.
The other final point is regarding parking, and I am concerned that people will park into the Greystone community, and so, I'm concerned about parking as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and thank you to Council Herb Street. I think you touched on many of the salient points about, you know, what all of us are concerned about. You know, looking at it and the pictures and the renderings and things like that, it looks good. You know, I have no issues with that, but I think it's just too much density, you know, in this particular location. You know, we don't have to rehash it, you know, the traffic. If it's going to be 80% SU students, and they're going to have to make it from that location, across Pleasant Valley, down Millwood, over to the, to the campus, there's really no good way to get there, and they're going to be on foot, they're going to be on bikes. I wish there was, but, you know, that's, that's completely out of the realm of possibility or sensibility. You know, we just went through this a couple of weeks ago with, with, with university, when, you know, they acquired the old Clearian Inn property, and the first thing on the top of the list was to get a pedestrian bridge built, so everybody could make it across Pleasant Valley Road. I mean, I would argue that both locations are... I mean, I would argue that both locations are not ideal. This one probably presents worse problems than the one down the street. So again, we would throw something up and not have a really good resolution, you know, as to how we were going to fix it. You know, I appreciate the President of Shenandoah sending us that letter and that correspondence. I'm not, I'm not really clear as to, you know, what, what they were trying to convey other than the specific points. I mean, when it comes to the university and housing, when we look back over the past 15 to 20 years about what, what's kind of gone on over there, they could have built housing. Instead, they built a football stadium, they built an event center, and they built parking garages. Kind of what goes on at the university in regards to housing is primarily controlled by the university. So if they need housing, that should be on their long-range plans. They do have some space there at the Armory Building where they could put up some housing, but, you know, I guess that is what it is. I just kind of am not aligned, I guess, with, with their ideas of, of, you know, where it should go and who should ultimately, you know, subsidize it or whatever we want to call it. So, you know, that's, that is what it is. But again, the way this is right now, it's, it's just too much density at that location for me personally. So I'll leave it at that.
Councillor Willingham.
Thank you. I think, obviously, in a perfect world, you know, we would all want this to remain as a commercial property. It provides the most tax benefit to the city without any of the potential major issues outside of, you know, traffic and things of that nature. But I, and so I think, you know, we do need to take into consideration that the days of massive retail outlets and grocery stores and things like that are probably gone. Maybe they'll be in a much smaller form or function, which I believe hopefully that they will continue to be, but I think we're going to probably see more rather than less opportunities for some type of mixed-use development. We looked at Wards Plaza and other areas like that, 1,000% chance they're going to send something very intensive with some type of residential use, simply because for any developer to take on a project, they're going to need that. In this situation, you know, I think they're trying to provide elements of doing just that, but in almost every circumstance, when I review this, you know, to follow up on the points that are made by my colleagues, they don't achieve that. You know, I think one of the things that sort of struck me about this conversation with Shenandoah was, you know, an indication of the Jubal, the Lofts of Jubal Square, which is a brand-new apartment complex, and it's indicated in the documentation that we have that only 25% of them are occupied by Shenandoah University students. 25%. That number's a lot lower than I thought it would have been. If that number would have been at 50, 60, 70%, it'd been indicative to me that, yes, there is a clear demand for people to want to locate closer to the university. The other thing that was surprising to me was the number of schoolchildren that were at this location as well. And I believe these are all two-bedroom units. Is that correct, Tim?
The ones at Jubal Square?
Yeah.
At Jubal Square? No, it's a combination of...
Were there twos and threes?
Twos, two plus den, and threes, and maybe some ones. It is a variety.
But it was mostly twos, is that right?
I believe so. Actually, I have those numbers because we, we've started putting some of that together. So for Jubal Square, 24 one-bedroom, 96 two-bedroom, and 23-bedroom units.
So, okay. So out of 20, which most likely are going to have children, so out of 20 units, there are, or 20, let's say even half of those potentially, or some of them are for the two bedrooms, we have 13 units. If you actually are creating three- and four-bedroom units, which are comparable to a home, which may be more affordable, you know, you're going to have more schoolchildren. So I think this analysis suggesting that there are only going to be three schoolkids is woefully inadequate. The other couple of points I want to make, a lot of projects such as this, and I think Councillor Hirstedt nailed it, there is a, there is a little bit of, appears to be a sort of a segregation of the commercial element and the residential element. There are a couple of different projects in the county where they're actually required to be triggers that you have to build the commercial components of these first, and then you can have the residential pieces. I believe at Russell 150, that's one of the requirements of that project. So, you know, I don't need to belabor the points, you know, we have a failing root at Pleasant Valley, it's going to get worse with this. So I've got all of these negatives, and I'm trying to balance, how do we create a project that can be, you know, good for the developer, good for the city, good for everybody? And this proposal just lacks it. There's lack of phasing, there's lack of elements about the elevation, I think there's lack of the commercial components, there's the, you know, I could go on and go on. So I just think generally this project overwhelms the site. I think that there could be a project here, I think that there could be opportunities and possibilities for us to make this work, because again, I think we're going to have to figure out a way to make a mixed-use project work in sites like these. But I think what's being suggested and requested is just, is woefully inadequate of what, what potentially would be best for everybody here. And so I don't know whether we need to table this tonight, but at least if this is what I have to vote on, I would be voting to recommend a denial. Thank you.
Councillor Veat.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, a couple of questions real quick that haven't already been asked. The parking, you said it's 286, I think you said, is required, but that's only for the residential, right, calculation, based on residential need only?
No, they, they also calculated the commercial, and so at the top of this image, they have the 38 spaces that are required for the 11,400 square feet of, of commercial space, and that's included in the 286 spaces that are required overall.
No matter what the use of the commercial is?
I don't want to say no matter, but what would likely occur there, that's a pretty consistent requirement.
The, it says in here, the estimate of the, for lack of, make sure I got these numbers right, about 446 bedrooms, about 20% of the occupants will, they're estimating to not be students. Is that right?
I think that is correct, yes.
Which comes in about 100, but as Councillor Willingham pointed out, just around the block, now I know this is closer to SU, but only 20, instead, 80%, they're saying here, is SU students. They only have 25%. If that's even double, we still have half of it occupied by possible families who are non-students, which I think will drive up the student, the public school system students dramatically, obviously higher than three. We heard earlier that the President said that there's no contract, so we have no guarantee from SU that they're going to be sending their students there at all, correct?
That's correct, yes.
You know, the small money that we supposedly make off of this, if SU buys it, then we're out of all that, because they don't pay property tax. And if they don't buy it, we're not guaranteed students are going to be occupied there, because they don't have an agreement with it. So that's worrisome to me that we don't have any promise in the future. Also, Tim, I think it says in here that there's no exact amount of green space or called open space. The staff can't determine it with this application?
I believe Mr. Painter, Tim Painter, has provided those details now, and this site actually is probably one of the highest percent green space of many of the PUDs that we've seen recently. They do have the combination of the 45% green for the residential and the 15% green for the commercial on a proportional basis.
But is Councillor Herb Street said, or pointed out that they're going to be probably selling that, or possibly selling that commercial off after they take the advantages on the calculation, then they're going to sell that off?
No, this is, this is already taken into account, the, the coverage of the commercial buildings. And to clarify that point, we do not deduct the acreage that is allocated to commercial use from the equation where they, they get to determine the residential density. We want to encourage the, the commercial mix, so we don't want to distance, incentivize the residential density in the process.
Let me ask if I may, Mayor, real quick. The dumpsters aren't identified, and I says, I think the staff says that, anytime they pick up the trash, particularly in the morning, it causes a lot of noise. So we don't know if it's back-to-back against the residential zone?
They have provided details of that, particularly for the residential. It's in the southwest corner, back where the parking garage is, in behind the, what used to be the former Fresh Market. It would be close to that, up against the railroad, as far away as possible from Graystone Terrace residential area. And then up front, the other dumpster would be at the extreme south end of the site, and while it would be up close to the commercial buildings, it would not be up near Graystone Terrace. It would be closer to the drive that used to go down to the Garden Center at the K-Mark.
And I've talked to a lot of citizens over there, they had a lot of concern with traffic. And I'm, like others have expressed, there seems to be a lot of heartache with this proposal as, as it is now. If it comes back with a lot of things fixed or holes, I might be able to support it. But I agree, I think it's overbuilt for the site. Thank you.
I think that Councillor Hirstedt laid out quite a few issues with this project, and I agree with each one of them, and I think that they need to be addressed. Also, many of us have spoken to people in that community, and they do have some concerns. And this project, with the size that it is, it probably could be scaled back a little bit. And the assumption, this always gets under my skin a little bit, when people start making assumptions, who's going to live where? With SU students moving there, and as Councillor Willingham pointed out, with the Jubal early apartments, that less than 20% of the residents there are students. I won't support this as-is. I think that it needs to go back to the drawing board. If there, if there any other discussion? Do you have your hand up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly won't repeat all of the comments that have been stated already, but I do concur with my colleagues on many of the concerns that they've expressed. I too have similar concerns, mostly a very equal concern about the problem of congestion there, the traffic that would be generated there on Pleasant Valley. So I do concur with my colleagues, as I said. Thank you.
Councillor Clark.
Couple of points. I do agree with Councillor Herb Street that I'd like to see ideally 10% of the property go to lower-income folks, and whether or not we choose to restrict that to first responders and teachers is another question, but I'd like to see at least 10% of the, of the unit go to lower-income folks. The other thing, I had a radical idea that hopefully our attorney can guide me whether or not it's legal. I'd like to take the six-foot opaque fence and approach the adjacent landowners on the one on the south, east, or Graystone Terrace, and then the Goodwill Building, and see if they would be amenable to continuing that fence all the way to Millwood Avenue. So from the railroad track all the way to Millwood Avenue. That way, you'd have one type of one fence that's opaque with no doors, and it goes all the way from the railroad track to Millwood Avenue. And then it's consistent, it looks unified, and you don't have people of any stripe walking back and forth north-south across Graystone. That would, that would probably alleviate about 99% of the concerns of the Graystone neighborhood, neighborhood.
Yes.
I think that would really be helpful. And clearly, you're going to be on the land owned by the Goodwill and the resident in the southeast last house on Graystone Terrace, but I think that neighborhood would really appreciate that modification. And I would like for the developer to pay that, that freight to put that fence in.
Just, just a quick update in that regard, the, the developer has met with a number of residents in Graystone Terrace, and particularly the ones on the west side are very happy with the fence proposal. And Mr. Eisenberg from the city did conduct the meeting within the last two weeks where we're looking at extending that same fence, consistent materials and height, to come around the cul-de-sac beyond where the red line is depicted on the, the exhibit up on the screen there, to screen the driveway that serves Mr. Allen's house on the east side of Graystone Terrace, and extend that fence all the way up to the rear entrance to Goodwill.
Okay.
Mrs. Michelson, she was going to respond to you.
Well, I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Humans mentioned earlier, that it's not council's arena to make suggestions or requirements, but to highlight areas of concern and things that may mitigate those concerns and let the developer and Mr. Lawson come up with proffer, voluntary proffers to address or alleviate those concerns.
Thank you.
I think that that is the concern of the neighborhood to the north, so that's why I brought it up. So I, overall, I like the project. I think the number may be a little bit too high in terms of units, and we also may have to look at the, the number of four-bedroom units. You know, it'd be great if you get a professor and his lovely family to live there, and then they can play house mother or dorm master, but, you know, you could also get students in there as well, and then that could be a more, more volatile situation with the large, the large units. But it's an interesting proposal. I look forward to seeing what happens. Thank you.
Councillor Hirstedt.
So this, this is making me think that, you know, we, we've talked about a housing study, and I think that this is, I'm not sure if, in the midst of the housing study, if they can incorporate student housing, but that would be, I think, a great piece to be able to include so we have a better sense of student housing in our community. I think quite a few people, students rent houses, and, you know, three or four of them will rent a house, and they, that's what they do. So it would be helpful to be able to incorporate that in the housing study. Thank you.
All right. I'll enter...
I was going to make a motion.
Councillor Willingham.
I'm going to make a motion to forward this on, recommending a denial, but I will say that I'd be happy to table this at the next meeting, or at the, the actual council meeting, if that's what the applicant and developer would like to do. But I'll make a motion to forward this on to council with a recommendation of denial, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Councillor Willingham and a second from Councillor Hirstedt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.